Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. And we have done a roll call. And we have everyone attending that are the commissioners, and I believe those that are going to be part of our regular meetings. So at this time, before we go into the formal meeting, I'm going to read, as always, the reason why we're doing this by telephone. And we look at the statute, so there's five statements that I will read to support having this telephone attendance in conference. Number one, it has been determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or proven because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the related peacetime emergency declaration made by Governor Walz in accordance with Minnesota Statute, Chapter 12, in reference. Secondly, we have ensured that all members of the body participating in the meeting, wherever their physical location, can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony offered by today's meeting, another reference. Number three, we have also ensured that members of the public present at the regular meeting location of the body can hear all discussion and testimony and all votes of the members of the body. We've urged the public not to attend this meeting in person because of the COVID-19 pandemic and have ensured that members of the public can view and monitor the meeting remotely in real time by broadcasting the meeting on Cook County website, another statute reference. Four, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have determined that it may be unfeasible for County Auditor Brady Powers, County Attorney Molly Hickon, County Administrator Rena Rogers, and the members of the Board of Commissioners to be physically present at the county board room at Cook County Courthouse. And last, number five, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote can, on each issue, will be identified and recorded. So I think we've been going very well with the protocols and muting when you can and having outside audios off. So would you join me at this time in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, we will go into making adjustments to the agenda. I'll do a roll call on that so that you have the opportunity to respond. Commissioner Deshaun?
Looks good to me.
Any adjustments? Commissioner DuKirk?
No adjustments, but when we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull an item.
Yes.
Over.
Good for that, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. I have no adjustments to the agenda, over.
Thank you. Commissioner Starlee?
No adjustments, over.
And I have none, okay? Then we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Would you say your name?
This is Commissioner Mills, second.
I didn't get the first one, so please help me with that.
Jenny.
Who made the motion? Jenny, okay.
I did.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Starlee and a second by Commissioner Mills. We'll do a roll call, both starting with Commissioner Starlee.
Aye, Starlee.
Commissioner Deshaun?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye, over.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye, over.
And aye, and aye. So it is approved unanimously. We do have a public comment. I have been informed, so I'll call on our interim Administrator Rogers to read this public comment, but is there anyone else in the audience this morning?
Um, no, there's not, Commissioner.
Okay. Will you please read that?
Sure. I received this on April 16th, Thursday, April 16th, from Andrea Orst. As a parent in Cook County, I would rather the semi-traffic not be directed in front of the schools. I understand that the hill on Fifth Avenue makes it difficult for trucks, and there's a great possibility that summer programs will be on hold due to the COVID-19 pandemic. If trucks are routed along that street, I would hope a slower speed limit would still be enforced at all times of the day, since school will not be in session over the summer. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of the work the commissioners and county staff are doing for our community. Andrea Orst.
I would like to mention before we go to the consent agenda that Attorney Hickon has informed us, or me, that she'll be leaving the meeting at 10:30, so if you have not read that email, please keep that in mind if you have any discussion items for her. Is that still correct, Attorney Hickon?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Okay. So do you have anything else to say about that, or we'll just let it suffice in saying you're leaving at 10:30? In other words, do you have anything you would like to say before you leave?
I don't think I have anything specific to the agenda to address unless somebody has questions for me or wants my comment.
Okay. Just from the main?
And I presume we should be close by 10:30 anyway.
Sure. Looks good, thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda items. Would anyone like to pull an item?
This is Commissioner DuKirk, I'd like to pull item E.
Okay, the gambling permit request, we will do that, and we will move that to the first discussion piece with the auditor number seven will be added there. I will do that. Anything else? Okay. Then I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda, or consent agenda, excuse me.
This is Commissioner Mills, I move to accept the consent agenda as amended, over.
Do we have a second?
Starlee, support.
Okay. We'll do a roll call on that. Commissioner DuKirk?
Approved, over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye, over.
Commissioner Deshaun? Commissioner Starlee?
Aye, over.
And Commissioner DuKirk, aye. Very good. And we'll move into our Emergency Operations Center update. Who would like to go first? Do we have both Grace and Mike on the line?
This is Grace, I can go first.
Okay. Thanks again for all you're doing, really keeping us up to date, I know, and really appreciate your leadership and work.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. I'm happy to give these updates to the board every week as well, so thank you all for being engaged and supportive. So I'll get started with the case count as of yesterday, April 27th. There were 3,816 lab-confirmed cases of COVID-19, 1,842 of which no longer need to isolate, and 286 COVID-19-related deaths in the state of Minnesota. One week ago, on April 20th, there were 2,470 confirmed cases in the state, and one month ago, on March 27th, there were 398 lab-confirmed cases. As of this morning, there are still no lab-confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Cook or Lake counties. Testing does remain limited throughout the state, so the situation is improving, as well as the country. So the figures I mentioned continue to be very low estimates of actual cases. Notably, last week, Governor Walz announced that the state of Minnesota entered into an agreement with the Mayo Clinic and University of Minnesota to rapidly ramp up our state's testing capacity to 20,000 tests per day, which is a huge increase. To date, in the state overall, there's been just over 60,000 tests total performed since the beginning of the pandemic in Minnesota. This past week, I agreed to be a representative from our rural public health department in a state work group organized by the Department of Health to look at how to make sure that vulnerable populations throughout the state have access to testing as our capacity ramps up. The populations this group is looking at include homeless individuals, people in congregate care settings, such as the Care Center and other long-term care facilities, childcare and healthcare workers, as well as people living in jails and correctional facilities. Increasing the state's testing capacity is a hugely important tool in our public health efforts throughout Minnesota to contain transmission of the virus. The basic way that we do this is by finding those who have COVID, testing them, helping them to isolate, helping their close physical contact quarantine, and getting those who need it medical care. The current MVH modeling predicts a peak in new cases of COVID in the state of Minnesota, sometime mid-July, with a possible secondary peak sometime this fall. So that's the situation updates, and I'll go into some updates from within our county EOC over the past week. So Allison Plummer from PHHS is working with the PIO, Lisa Starlee, to post regular updates to both the COVID hub site and social media on the various financial assistance programs available to community members. Jim Boyd, in his role as business liaison, has been organizing a task force that brings together business and health perspectives in the context of COVID-19, and starts a conversation on how local businesses can take health and safety measures into account as they reimagine their operations during the pandemic. This group met last Friday for the second time. Linda Jurick asked for my feedback and the feedback of other healthcare leaders in the community, as she is creating a best practices guide for tourism businesses as they look toward opening as safely as possible in the midst of the pandemic, and I sent her feedback yesterday. I've been getting increasing numbers of inquiries from local camps and businesses that house seasonal employees regarding best practices for safety in terms of staff returning for summer from other areas, and in terms of dorm-style housing. And I am doing some research into how to support planning efforts in consultation with staff at the Minnesota Department of Health. We're hoping for updated guidance within the next week regarding summer camps specifically. The Behavioral Health Response Team put out a call for volunteers last Tuesday who would staff a community support line that provides coping skills and support to people who are struggling in the midst of the pandemic. Grace Bouchard and Matthew Backley are working on training materials for volunteers, as well as coordinating logistical details of how the phone line and volunteer staffing will work. Mike Keport, Kimber Ralsted, Pat Eliasen, and myself met last week to review our county's mass fatality plan, and we made some minor revisions. The Transportation Group within the EOC has mapped out a list of possible scenarios that would require transportation assistance. A few local resorts have offered the use of small buses or 15-passenger vans that would be able to accommodate social distancing while providing transportation assistance. There are still many logistical details to work through in order to find a way to safely meet community members' transportation needs in the context of COVID, but this conversation is ongoing. Andrea Orst, in her role as volunteer manager, is working with Kate Gremlin of Care Partners to support Care Partners volunteers in providing assistance to older adults who are struggling with the new grocery system. WTIP is hosting a panel discussion on COVID-19 this Thursday, April 30th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. That will include myself, Rena Rogers, Dan Shirley from Saddle Outfitters, Dr. Farshman from Satis Mountain Clinic, and Linda Jurick from Dixittown County. The Local Emergency Preparedness Group met last Tuesday, April 21st. There is still lots of uncertainty about how things will progress over the summer months from member agencies. Most participants are thinking creatively about health and safety in the context of 19, while also trying to be flexible in their planning. And lastly, Molly Hickon, County Attorney, wrote an article explaining some of the different orders and questions she's been getting, and we've been getting from the community, related to the, basically the legal issues and orders that have surrounded COVID-19 throughout the state and the community, because we have been getting questions at the EOC from community members. So hopefully that article cleared up some confusion for community members. And thank you, Molly, for putting that together. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, so I will do a roll call to see if any commissioner has a comment or question, and thanks so much, Grace, great things are happening in difficult times, and we're all working together very well as a community and a county, that's really all we can do. Very good. Commissioner Deshaun?
Um, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions, as always. Thank you to the entire group for all your work.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Thank you, Grace, for the update, and thank you for your continued work. I just wanted to tell the board that at the recent hospital board meeting, Grace's work has been especially admired and appreciated, and I just wanted to pass that on to our board as well. So thank you once again, Grace, and that's all, over.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Starlee?
Thank you. And always, Grace, from the group and everyone, you've been diligent in working in this. I guess I have maybe a comment or question. The first testing round you mentioned would be for congregate living, and I have some elderly here in the West End wondering, then will that proceed to individuals eventually?
Well, so we've been, we've been lucky here in Cook County, because we've been able to test people who are symptomatic. So if someone in the community is having upper respiratory symptoms, they can contact the clinic and set up a time to get a test, but that hasn't been the case throughout the state. So many other parts of the state have only been testing what state considers to be very high-risk groups. So congregate living is one of those settings throughout the state, but in many parts of the state, any person who is symptomatic has not had access to testing state. We've been fortunate in Cook County that that hasn't been the case. So yes, if there's someone on the West End who's wondering if they're able to get testing, I would urge them to contact a clinic, because we absolutely have that ability here in Cook County.
Great, okay, thank you.
And I have one final, one final comment. Thank you for your willingness to serve at the state level with the Health Department, and that really says a lot about the work you've done here when you're asked to serve in that. So you're picking a larger rural Minnesota as well, so it's good that you do that. We're recognized, by the way, that's come up in conversations about how we have moved forward with our Emergency Operations Plan and the hub and all that. Some of the meetings I've had with other commissioners around the state were recognized for that, and you have a big part of that. So is Mike Keport with us, the Emergency Manager, this morning? Do you have anything, Mike, if you are with us?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair. I am here. Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, community members. Grace covered most, most everything. I just have a few other things to connect with you with. And of course, the Emergency Oper, Emergency Operations Center continues to be open. We, we, we do daily briefing, three days a week with just key partners, two days a week with a larger group of section chiefs and different EOC staff members. We also started meeting myself, Grace, and Jim Weenan, and to go over our IAP, which stands for Incident Action Plan, bi-weekly, just to make sure we're all on the same page and update our, our objectives if necessary. One other thing of interest, last week, Thursday, our meeting with the state, there was a lot of questions about counties having to extend this local emergency declaration for 30 days, and so we did reach out to the state and got an answer. I have some language that I will be getting with, with Molly on to verify that this is accurate, but we should not have to keep extending this 30-day declaration. It can just be open-ended until the board chooses to end it, and according to the language I got, but I'll reaffirm that with Molly for our, for the future meeting. I continue to meet, as I said, with the state and region. State twice a week, regional partners, three days a week. We did, we have received some PPE, I have some more on order. We have access, I think, as I said last week, to some bulk supplies. I've ordered some more smaller containers so we can move some of this stuff around. Lastly, I did get a call yesterday late afternoon, and then I returned the call to the Grand Portage Tribal Council. I take that back, Grand Portage Tribal Council person reached out and is having concerns if they're, if they are prepared enough should they get a positive case within the reservation. And they were, Rick Anderson is the person that I spoke to, the Tribal Council person, and he would like to meet with myself, Grace, Grand Portage Public Health, Dr. Sampson, and ideally the entire Tribal Council up there, just to, you know, have a conversation to assure that they are, if there's anything more that maybe the county can, can help them work through, being a little more prepared. You know, they do have an elder housing unit, and that is, you know, brings up some concern also, so I'll be setting up that meeting hopefully this week. I believe that's it, other than I was just going to give you an FYI, some of this FEMA speak, it gets confusing, but there, in any disaster, there, there's categories of work, there's seven categories for many different things, and everything we're doing falls under category B, which is, which is titled Emergency Protective Measures. So that, that's the category we'll be working under through this entire incident. That's all I have for you commissioners this morning.
Okay. Any questions or comments for our Emergency Management Director? I would just like to start that off, saying that you're a big part of this, and the recognition and the work that we're getting for our community is really great, so thank you for your part in that. You're a great, great team. It just comes up that way every time we talk, and you'll see it in the actions, you're working for the common good very well. So let's start with Commissioner DuKirk for comments or questions for Emergency Management Director.
Mr. Hart, thank you to Mike and Jim for their work. No questions, over.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Mike, for your work. I've had people in the public just mention how, how great your presence is, and calm and systematic, and I appreciate your good work soon. That's all, over.
Commissioner Deshaun?
Um, no comments. Thanks, Mike.
Commissioner Starlee?
There again, thanks a bunch for what you do and your team, and it's all appreciated, and keep on, keep on. Thank you, over.
Okay, very good. We'll go to item five on the agenda, where highway issues are, and we'll start with the revised Highway 61 detour plan, so we're going to have Michael Collinlock with us, the project manager from Mindop. And Michael, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so good morning, thank you to you for all you're doing with, working with us and taking a look at the situation.
You bet, yeah. Okay, to proceed on the fence?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, yeah, good morning. My name's Michael Collinlock, for those that have not joined in a couple of weeks ago, but Assistant District Engineer for Mindop, District One at Duluth. I was the project manager for the Highway 61 project in Grand Marais. I met with the board two weeks ago, the last board meeting, and presented our detour agreement for the upcoming Highway 61 project in and around Grand Marais. At the board meeting, there were concerns that the board brought forward regarding truck turning movements and routing through Grand Marais, in particular at the intersection of Fifth Avenue West and County Road 12 at the Gunpoint. And the suggestion from the board was I worked with County Engineer Kristen Foster and, and others to evaluate an alternative truck route, and the alternative truck route really was identified during that, during that board meeting as the continuation of County Road, continued use of County Road 7 between Fifth Avenue West and the Gunpoint, kind of past the school, and what those implications would be. And so after that meeting, I worked with our Mindop District One Traffic Engineer, Jim Miles, in fact, Jim Miles is on the call today as well, on a separate line, but Jim's on the call as well. And so I worked with Jim on evaluation of splitting the traffic, having vehicle traffic follow one detour route, kind of what we had originally planned. Vehicle route would still be going up past the hospital, up to Gunpoint and around, and having truck traffic flow past the school, if you will, and then back over to the Gunpoint and over to 61. And in the packet, you should have received, they had a couple of maps in there, one showing 2020 and 2021 construction, project staging, and that the maps are not meant to be all-encompassing of the various, all the staging, the big things, it would really be shown on both of those maps. There was a purple horizontal line identified as the truck detour route, and really what that shows is County Road 7 continuing, coming in from south or west, however you'd like to refer to it as, and then continuing past the school over to the Gunpoint, where it matches back up with the Gunpoint, and then back over to 61, the purple line, horizontal line there. So that, that was, that was the takeaway that I had from the board meeting on the 14th, to kind of evaluate what, what, what that may look like. So we, we have, we have looked at what implications that would have to our overall signing plan. Of course, our, our signing plan that's in our construction plan right now would need to be revised, so there would be considerable modifications needed to our plan, which is not insurmountable, but what we're, our biggest concern would be with that truck detour route is trying to minimize other cut-through traffic, so that other vehicle traffic doesn't also follow that route. So we would need to make sure we sign it clearly and monitor it to, if we have to make any modifications during construction, to either add additional signage to make it clear that regular vehicle traffic are not to be using that route. So that would be... be really a truck route only. So I guess I'm going to stop there. Are there any, are there any questions? Make sure that I understood that correctly from our, our previous meeting, if that was the suggestion. And if there's any questions for what we have shown there?
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We'll start with a roll call on questions or comments. And we'll start with Commissioner Deshaun, who proposed this. So any comments or questions?
Um, yeah, the only comment I have is the temporary four-way stop at the top of Fifth and the Gunflint Trail now. I don't think that's a good place for a four-way stop sign with truck traffic coming down the hill. All, I think all the gravel pits in the county are up on the hill there, and to have a truck stop coming around that corner, just doesn't make no sense. That's like putting a stop sign at the bottom of Thompson Hill. And that's my comment on it.
Sorry if I respond to that now, or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, so that was not, although I'm showing it on this exhibit, that was not, that, that, we didn't add that since the last meeting, but I'm glad you brought that up. So the, we do have those big changeable message signs. As part of our plan, we've got a changeable message sign well up the hill in advance of that to notify folks or drivers that there is a four-way stop at the bottom, that there's a changed condition temporarily at the bottom of the hill. And, and maybe Jim, Jim Miles, our traffic engineer, could speak to it a little bit more here, if he'd be. But the idea is, there is going to be a lot more traffic at that intersection, and want to make sure that, that, you know, the drivers have the defined, you know, there is a defined role there with the four-way stop to allow people to maneuver that intersection. So although we have to be a changed condition temporarily for our construction, we are putting a changeable message sign for the folks coming down the hill, so that they know that there is a stop sign at the bottom.
Okay. We'll go to Commissioner Starley?
I'm writing notes. Thank you. No, that seems reasonable to have a sign coming down the Gunflint to warn people that there's going to be, what kind of a four-way stop is that going to be?
Uh, just a stop sign.
Stop sign, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Over.
Yep. Commissioner DuKirk?
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry. Ginny and you were talking over each other. Is that a stop sign or a stop light?
Stop sign.
Is it possible to, is it possible to have a stop light?
Jim Miles, could you speak to that? Kind of the, the warrants related to a stop light versus a signal maybe at that location?
Well, I'm, again, Jim Miles here, Traffic Engineer. Our consulting work for doing this plan, they looked at the traffic impacts of the detour. And I know that they determined that a temporary signal at Fifth and County Road 7 was necessary. And I believe based on the traffic volumes, a four-way stop suffices, should adequately, adequately direct traffic without, without having too many implications. Four-way stops accomplish the same thing as a signal, just albeit everybody stops.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of truck traffic. But, you know, anytime we've got construction on the Gunflint Trail, the trucks have to stop if there's something going on. So I know it's difficult, but I guess we'll get through it. It's only a couple of weeks. Thank you. Over.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And I had similar questions as Commissioner Deshaun and Commissioner DuKirk. And I appreciate the feedback to answer those. I also appreciate the work to, you know, accommodate concerns regarding the truck traffic continuing on 7. And, and I do hear, do hear the concerns from the public about having trucks on 7 at the schools and daycares and churches as well. But I think this is, this is the safer route. I guess to, I was wondering if, if we could address just, if there's going to be any change in speeds on these detour routes as well? Over.
Jim, is that something?
Right. I believe the speed limit on this route, we're not planning to change the speeds. So any in-place signing will remain in place. And forgive me for not being terribly familiar with it, but I believe the in-place speed limit is 30. However, there are some 20 mile an hour signs near the schools, and we have no plan, near the school, and we have no plan of changing any of them. Certainly. Thank you.
Okay. So just to follow up on that, make sure everyone understands, there are 20 mile an hour signs in the school zone. And you, I think, did you refer, you mentioned 30 miles per hour. So it'd be 30 miles an hour unless it's posted for 20 miles an hour in the school zone, or would it, please clarify that? Or would the whole stretch there from Fifth Avenue West, you know, over to the Gunflint Trail going east, would be 20 or 30? Because we have two schools there.
I guess what I'm saying is that whatever it's currently posted at, so whatever you drive it today legally, it will be what the legal speed limit is during the detour.
Okay. Good. And I would just comment, I think that the four-way stop is pretty consistent coming down the hill and have a signal. I think it'd be problematic because it's not consistent. And I would assume that's why you put it there. Is that correct?
The four-way stop on the Gunflint and Fifth Avenue West?
Yeah, for the consistency that everyone has the expectation that they're going to stop rather than to watch for a signal light.
Yes, actually, that's a good point. Because if everyone coming down the hill will have to stop, and then you will have somebody trying to run a green, or trying to run a red, or beat the, beat the red, I should say. So yes, that, that does give, actually, four-way stops are some of our safest intersections out there, because unless somebody blows the stop sign, it's pretty tough to get into a significant crash at four-way stop.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay. So I guess, unless anyone else has any other questions or concerns that they'd like to comment on, and then open this up to, for a motion to approve this revised plan. I think that's every, I think we all understand it. If not, please clarify your confusion or anything like that. Okay. So?
Hi, this is, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
This is, this is Commissioner Mills. And I, I understand there won't be any change in speed limits. I, I think it might be helpful to have additional signage, just to clarify that from the get-go, right off the temporary signal as well as the temporary four-way stop. Or any, you know, just any, any change there. I think, I think it'd just be nice to have additional signage. And I, I do appreciate the, the changing sign. I'm assuming that's an electronic sign that's up the hill? Is that what you're talking about, Mike?
Yes. Yep. It's an electronic sign.
Yep. No, that sounds, that sounds great. And, you know, I'll make, I'll make the motion to, to approve the, and authorize for the revised Highway 61 detour plans. Over.
Okay.
Commissioner DuKirk, I'll support that.
Very good. And I would just like to comment that I would hope that we really consider a 20 mile an hour speed limit for that whole duration, rather than have it varied, just be consistent. And so that, I think that would be a county issue, maybe with our highway department or the city. So hopefully that's the assumption I'm going with as we go forward. Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote on that to authorize this. Start with Commissioner Starley?
Mr. Chair, point of order, discussion first, if there's any further discussion. Over.
Oh, I thought I asked that. You responded. Okay. Any other further?
Um, yeah, I just-
Commissioner DuKirk?
Commissioner DuKirk?
Yeah. CES is on the Gunflint Trail. The Gunflint Trail is a truck route. 20 miles an hour is not necessary. I think that there, you know, to address Commissioner Mills' concerns, the Active Living Steering Group did just recently go up and down at that entire route and look at different signage and whether or not there needs to be more. You're more than welcome to walk it. There is signs like every single block in that area. So truck drivers understand traffic laws as well as anyone else and have stricter rules to follow. So I don't recommend more signage, and I wouldn't want it to be 20 miles an hour for the entire length of it. And it's, it's fine. There were trucks there years ago before the county moved it to not a truck route. And I know that truck drivers are incredibly safe drivers, and they will be as careful as possible and follow all the rules. Over.
Okay. Well, if the signage is clear to everyone, then I guess that would be funny. Okay. Did I hear anyone else that wanted to comment? I thought I did.
Yeah, that was me. Yeah, I still, I still have a problem with the four-way stop at the top of the Fifth and the Gunflint there. The bid that was just let on last Friday, Yulin, for the Grand Portage Project, Highway 61 Project, that's 110,000 ton of material that's going to be coming down the hill in the next two years. That's approximately 5,000 trucks that will be coming down that hill and have to come to a stop. And I guess I can bring the conversation back to where our last meeting was there. I'm going to bet again that I'm the only one on this phone call that has driven a truck before. And you're going to heat your brakes up coming down the hill, you're going to stop, then you're going to get going, and you're going to have to come to a stop again.
Commissioner Deshaun?
What?
Are others hearing some kind of disturbance in the audio? Yes, I could not-
Yeah, he's broke up.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, but I got distant pieces of what you're saying. So I'm wondering if we can address the audio, so you could repeat that for everyone.
Can you hear me now?
Going up live. Go ahead. Let's try it.
Can you hear me now?
It's broken up.
Yeah, it's a choppy thing. Rena, it might be the situation where you have to hang up and call back in again. Over.
All right, we can do that.
Interminister, you're breaking up as well.
Put your damn mask on and get to the meeting.
Um, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dial in again. So you guys can all stay on, and we'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you. If you are the leader, press- To start or join your conference, you will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call, or for future playback, press star two.
You want to say something?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, it's still, it's still broken up.
What a joke.
Try it. Can, can you keep talking here and?
The, the stream is fine.
The screen is fine?
The audio on the stream is fine.
Okay.
So it's either internal or something else.
Well, it's on the call. They can't hear it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll try it one more time.
Okay.
Thank you. If you are the leader, press, you will now-
Oops. I screwed up. Got ahead of myself.
Welcome to the State of Minnesota's Conference Center. Enter your con- Thank you. If you are the leader, press star now. To start or join your conference, press one. To, you will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call, or for future playback, press star two.
Can you hear me now?
Sorry, no. Not very well, but I guess.
All my comments were regarded, so.
Um, you guys can't hear this? Because it comes across on the video pretty well. It's just-
It's, it's very broken up. It's, uh-
Yeah, very choppy.
Yeah. It's very hard to follow. I guess we can try, and we'll vote, but if we, we continue with this, we're going to have problems with understanding each other, I believe. But I guess, let's just try this again. And Commissioner Deshaun, if you would make your statement, and if we, if anyone thinks that this is just not working, then please let me know. And then we'll have to just figure out where to go from here. Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, one, one solution might just be to call in with the cell phones instead of the, the MetWorks phone in the courthouse there. But we can try this first, as you say. Over.
Sure. Yeah. I guess the question is maybe to Administrator Rogers, is that if we do that, will it still be live streamed?
Everybody on the live stream got my comment already, so.
The, the live stream is working just fine. And in fact, they can hear us and they can hear you. The, um, the issue apparently is-
Right.
Something coming back to you-
I guess-
Across the phone line.
So, so the Commissioner Mills had stated that if you and Commissioner Deshaun went to your cell phone, would this work on our, you know, our broadcast, our YouTube?
Uh, it wouldn't affect the YouTube. I'm not sure how that would work on our cell phones. We would still need to have our microphones on here, and we would need a microphone on the cell phones, the speaker on the cell phone, so that you all can be heard, because it's over the air sound system.
Okay. Well, let, let's see if we can get through this. So Commissioner Deshaun, would you start with your statement about the stop sign issue?
Well, can you hear me?
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I can't, I can't, I couldn't understand Rena, and I can't make out what Commissioner Deshaun is saying.
Well, then, probably not.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try and call it one more time. I don't know what else to do. Ready?
Be here till four o'clock in the afternoon, if this is the way we're going.
Is that if we all go off, then- Is that if we all go off, then- You're retiring your conversation. You're gonna be a long day.
Welcome to the State of Minnesota's Conference Center. Enter your conference code, followed by the pound or hash sign. Thank you. If you are the leader, press star now. Please enter your leader- To start or join your conference, press one. To change- You will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call or for future playback, press star two.
Someone's back on.
Did people leave and come back? Can you hear us now?
Yes, yes, better.
Okay.
Is everybody on?
Is everyone on?
Yes. Well, another roll call. Okay, I'm here and Commissioner Starley here? Commissioner Starley, are you on?
I have been on the whole time, yes, yes.
Okay. And I believe Commissioner Mills is and DuKirk and Deshaun. Okay, so Commissioner Deshaun, then, continue. Whatever you did, it's great. Worked.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good.
Okay, um, the, I still have a problem with the four-way stop on the Gunflint Trail. You know, there is a, right around the corner, there's a runaway truck ramp. The, MINDOT just let a bid out last Friday for the Highway 61 project up in Grand Portage. That's gonna be a two-year project. That's approximately 5,000 trucks that are gonna be coming down that hill loaded. And I guess I'll go back to the, what I, last time at the meeting there, I would be betting that I'm the only person on this phone call that has driven a truck before. And there's a reason why there's a runaway truck ramp coming down the hill. You know, you're gonna heat your brakes up coming down the hill and you get going again, you heat them up again. You know, it's a safety factor is what it is in my eyes, being a truck driver. And I just have a problem with that four-way stop sign.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yep, this is Commissioner DuKirk. Bobby, what about traffic going up that hill and stopping? As someone who lives up that hill, it's very excruciating getting behind a logging truck going up that hill. And I'm just wondering if they're stopping going up that hill, if that's a problem besides the runaway truck ramp going down. And yeah, I mean, I'm with Bobby on this. I'm still concerned about that being a four-way stop. I know four-way stops are safer, but yeah, I'm just having issues with that also. Over.
Okay.
You know, if you look at the-
Any other comments?
This is Commissioner Deshaun again. You know, if you look at the, look at the amount of trucks that are gonna be coming down there just for the 61 project in the Grand Portage area, then you add the trucks to the 61 project through Graham Ray. You know, it's, um, it, it becomes a safety issue in my eyes. And MINDOT should know that, that it would be a safety hazard.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
This is Commissioner Mills and I guess, um, listening to Commissioner Deshaun and Commissioner DuKirk, the only other option that I see is to have all traffic, trucks and, uh, just all vehicles, passenger vehicles, take the County 7 detour, County Road 7, straight through past the schools. In that way, we wouldn't have to change that intersection of Fifth Avenue West and the New Gunflint Trail. My thoughts before, and I'm, I'm very open, my thoughts before was that if we can separate the traffic, and I'm no engineer, I'm no traffic engineer, I'm not a truck diver or anything, so this is all just talk. But my thoughts were, if, if we separated the, the traffic, that it could help the flow of the trucks going on 7. But if that just causes problems for the trucks coming up and down the New Gunflint, then maybe that, maybe that flow gain is not worth it. That's, I guess that, I don't, I'm, like I said, I'm open and I'm, I'm looking for other perspectives. Over.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, my concern is if we try to move car traffic in front of the school zone, if there's trucks going there, we all know human behavior. They're not gonna wanna be behind a semi and they're gonna try and go around it. I think the easiest solution is just to change that from a four-way stop to a traffic light. Commissioner Mills, are you willing to amend your motion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Mills and I guess I would like to hear a little bit more from MINDOT about, about, um, about that or, or, or about the whole situation and Commissioner Deshaun's concerns and yours. Over.
Okay. Well, I guess, look, we have a motion in the report. So it is for having a temporary four-way stop. And we'll vote on that and see how it, it comes out and decide how to proceed from there. Is that understood by everyone, what we're voting on?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can we, can we hear from MINDOT before we vote? Over.
Sure. Um, Michael and any others? Would you like to provide a comment on this?
I guess, Michael here, from a traffic perspective, I think Jim's gonna have to weigh in on that. But I mean, when we, when we had, when we talked about traffic routing here, our initial routing that we had, when we worked with the steering committees, was to have truck and vehicle traffic going past the school. I mean, that was our original proposal. And through our public engagement with the community, the feedback we received was, we didn't want any traffic past the school. So that is why and how we ended up with the plan that we have to the contractor today on how we have the trucks and the cars going up to the Gunflint and around them. So there was considerable effort put into, or engagement, I should say, to kinda how we had it routed. So when we came to the board a couple of weeks ago, the idea of kinda going back and putting the truck on that through route, I mean, that is kind of a more intuitive route because it's the shortest route and it, it probably does make some sense for all traffic there also. But also recognize, as one of the commissioners mentioned, gee, that's an awful lot of traffic probably put through that route also. So, um, but if it's truly coming down to what the traffic control situation is at the, at the intersection of Fifth Avenue West and the Gunflint, whether it's a traffic signal or a stop sign, if it, if the light's red, those trucks are still gonna have to stop and be prepared to stop. So even if the trucks are loaded and four-way stops, they're gonna know they have to stop each time if it's a, and I'm not a traffic engineer either, but if it's yellow or, you know, almost red coming down the hill, we wouldn't want those loaded trucks thinking that they could make it either. Well, those people coming out from Fifth Avenue would wanna be, if they have, they have the right of way, we wouldn't want those loaded trucks, you know, pushing their luck either coming through that intersection when they think that they can kinda get through when they don't have the right of way. So I, I mean, those are just my thoughts. So we originally were gonna go on this, on County Road 7 until we got the community feedback that they didn't want it there. So that's how we ended up on the road that we're on. And then as far as the evaluation of that traffic control at the intersection, I don't know, Jim, could you speak to that? Of what we could look at in addition there?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll step in here. Um, the, the four-way stop primarily is because of the concern about the sight distance as you, as you're coming up Fifth Avenue West and looking at, looking up the hill. And knowing it's a hill, um, I suspect, I, I personally can't tell you what the speed limit is, but I suspect that many people are traveling rather quickly at that point. And there's really not a great deal of sight distance for people who are coming up Fifth and then they're gonna make that right to follow the detour. So the four-way stop or the all-way stop was primarily put in there to mitigate that, that fact. And make sure that anybody making that right or actually making the left as well as coming up the Gunflint Trail to make the left to follow the detour, had adequate, had an adequate gap and could make that maneuver without having to judge how fast somebody was going. And I would say that an all-way stop affords you that. I, I hear the concerns about the trucks, I do. I guess in my mind, um, I think the concerns about people being able to make that adequately, judge gaps are more of an issue to me than, than, uh, I think truckers will be able to accommodate or account for the, the stopping at the bottom of the hill. I know you said it was a MINDOT project, so we can certainly, through our contractor, relate to all those truckers that this is a concern. But that's all I have.
Okay. Any other further comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
For the interim, yes, Commissioner Mills?
Yes, this is Commissioner Mills and I, I don't mean to drag this out. I just want, it's harder on, on the phone and I just wanna make sure we're, we're having a thorough discussion here. Uh, it, it sounds to me that Commissioner Deshaun is, and maybe Commissioner DuKirk are coming at it thinking that we should maybe, well, I guess, I guess I'd like to know where Commissioner DuKirk is coming from if she thinks we should have no signal or stop sign there or, uh, well, I, I see it as either we allow all traffic or encourage all traffic to go along County Road 7 or I think we need some kind of signal or stop sign at the Fifth Avenue West Gunflint Trail intersection. And so we're just, in my mind, we're just kinda picking between the lesser harm or the greater safety or, or I guess that's, that, those are kinda the two options that I, that I see to alleviate the concerns that are brought up by, by Commissioner Deshaun and I, and I, and I recognize and, and understand. Then I guess I'm curious what Commissioner Deshaun, what, what is thinking there too. Over.
Okay, so, um, I think, did everyone understand Commissioner Mills' request? If you would like comments, I believe, from Commissioner DuKirk and Commissioner Deshaun on what he's proposing and clarify it more. So I'll go with you, Commissioner DuKirk. Would you like to respond to that?
I understand the concerns with having a light and people possibly running the light. So maybe as Commissioner Mills suggested, we don't have a four-way stop and we don't have a traffic light. We leave it as it currently is. And for those passenger vehicles going up for the new detour, there is one of those lighted signs down at the intersection, you know, maybe past the recycle center that just says two-way stop. So they understand when they get to that intersection that all the traffic on 12 is going as normal. And I know the comment about whether there's a visual coming around that corner. It's a two-way stop now. I drive it before COVID-19 almost every day and I can clearly see up the hill and I know that not everyone is going the 40 miles an hour that is posted there. And maybe we change it to a temporary 30, but, um, you know, maybe we just don't have a four-way intersection there. We leave it as a two-way and I'm comfortable with that. I, I'm having a hard time with stopping vehicles that don't normally stop there. Over.
Okay, Commissioner Deshaun, any more comments from you?
Um, yeah, I think it should just stay the way it is myself with the stop sign going up and the through traffic going through. You know, even if you, you know, you think a little bit more on a four-way stop, you got a log truck, gravel truck, whatever there, starting out on that hill there, you're gonna be going another mile up the Gunflint Trail at about 10 miles an hour. So you're gonna have traffic backups, et cetera, there. And, you know, I think it should just stay the way it is with the stop signs on both sides, so.
This is Commissioner DuKirk with a follow-up with Deshaun. I just wanna reiterate what he's talking about, the going up. And I tried to say this and I just wanna make it clear to MINDOT, as a person who drives that route and lives on that route, if you have a logging truck that is, or any truck that's loaded and heavy that's gonna stop at that four-way stop going up, right now, when they have all the ability to come from 61 and head up, they're barely going 20 miles an hour. And I continually watch people passing them and going around them in the no-passing zone, going up because they don't wanna be behind them and they don't wanna wait. There's Old Ski Hill Road, which many of the people know you can go around that. And there are families and residential and kids up there and people go up that road at like 50 miles an hour to try and get in front of the trucks so they can come back out on the Gunflint Trail, which is incredibly dangerous. And if you stop them at a four-way stop at Gunflint and Fifth and they're now going, like Bobby said, five, 10 miles an hour, we're gonna create another issue going up the trail of people passing into no passing and trying to get around by going on residential roads and beating the truck coming out on the other end. So like Bobby said, let's just leave it as a two-way stop. Over.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Mills?
Apologies, thank you. I guess, thank you for addressing that, commissioners. What I'm also interested is in directing all the traffic down 7 as MINDOT originally proposed. Over.
This is Commissioner DuKirk. I do not wanna send all the traffic down 7. Just send the trucks down 7 and the cars can go up and around and the cars are gonna go up and most likely, they're gonna be taking a right anyways. And I think it's gonna be fine. Over.
Okay, um, any other comments from the commissioners? And I guess I would like to hear again from Michael and Jim, I believe. Have you commented on us? You're the people that work with this all the time. If we did, if we just leave it the way it is, what are the implications or concerns that you would have for us? If that's the way we go? I would just like to hear from you again on that. I know you have reasons for doing what you're doing, but I guess I would like you to comment that if we did change this, what would be the concerns? What would be the liabilities or issues that we'd have to deal with? Your professional recommendation on that.
This is Michael. So under, under the scenario where we're detoring additional traffic through that intersection, we're adding additional volume, of course, from what's there today. If, if we add additional volume to that intersection, is there like a tripping point, Jim, where if we add 2,000 cars a day, whatever that number is, that we, that we are required to add stop signs? Is that something that we could say- Is that something that we could say at this point, okay, we'll leave it as is, but it's something that during construction, that if we see that what we've got out there is not working, that we need to reserve the right, that we have to put a four-way stop in there? We have to put some sort of control in there? Is that something that we could do or do we already know right now that we have to have some way, some sort of four-way control based on the traffic volume?
Jim, I, again, the, our rationale for putting the all-way stop in there was primarily the concern that with the additional volumes, we would have a safety issue and potential, potential right angle crashes, which what we know are the serious type crashes. I don't think we looked at the traffic volumes. There is such a thing as a volume warrant for an all-way stop. I don't believe we looked at it because our primary concern was not the traffic volumes, being able to navigate that intersection. It was the concern with traffic coming down the hill. I would have to look at those volumes to know where we're at as far as whether it's a necessity or, I guess, the meeting warrants doesn't mean it's a necessity. It means that there's enough traffic that it's a good idea. I guess I would have a concern that if something happens and if we did not have an all-way stop in, that would be a concern. If we had, we had planned on it, something happened and then we ended up putting it in later. But just some thoughts on my part, there is, it's not unheard of for us to start with certain traffic control and modify it accordingly as we get familiar with how traffic patterns will change. This is the official detour. However, we know that a lot of people will, are actually destined for downtown, so there will certainly not be the full complement of traffic on the detour that you see downtown. But, so there is something to be said about trying a different plan initially and being willing to modify it as you monitor traffic and monitor how it's working.
Okay. I would just like to ask one question just because of my background. Are there liability issues if decisions are made in which recommendations are not consistent with, in regards to, you know, highway safety? Or is that not an issue?
I'll answer that. Assuming that was for MINDOT.
Yeah.
We have something, we have certain kind of, I don't want to get sued over this, but I think that we have a certain kind of immunity. If we make a decision and we have good rationale for making that decision, frequently, as long as there's good documentation, we, you can make decisions that won't haunt you because you have the legal authority to make those decisions. So, I guess regardless of what we do, we would document why the decision was made and we have the authority to make that decision.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions or? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Mills. I was just asking if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you. And this is maybe getting too far out there, but I'm thinking about the concerns about trucks stopping on the Gunflint, going up the hill and starting again. One thing I've noticed is there are two lanes coming down the hill and one lane going up the hill. And what I'm wondering is if two lanes going up the hill would alleviate some of that frustration and dangerous, the danger with passing because there's only that one lane typically. Is that, is that a potential, is that potential for the scope of the detour?
Commissioner Mills, this is Commissioner DuKirk. We've had that conversation numerous times over the year. We had the conversation when the zip line was going to be put up to the left going up the hill. And the Gunflint Trail is not crowned properly to have the two lanes going up. And that would also cause an issue with traffic coming down and the runaway trucks having that entire lane to gain control of their vehicle. It sounds to me, MINDOT, you can reiterate this, but it sounds to me that MINDOT is willing to leave it as a two-way and adjust as the season goes depending on the level of traffic. And if that is true, I am comfortable with that. Over.
Okay. Do the MINDOT people here want to comment on that?
Is that, is that something that we need to evaluate further before we can submit to that, Jim? Coming into today, the discussion I thought was going to be trucks versus automobiles, right? So, we've not done additional work in the last two weeks to evaluate the intersection control. Again, that was because that was in our, in our plan that led to the contractor. So, I want to make sure that, you know, that, I'm not putting Jim on the spot here to make this decision whether the four-way stop is in or out, but also recognize that we want to start construction in two weeks or four weeks, that we need to have the detour agreement in place as well. So, and from a safety perspective, we want to make sure that we do the right thing. And I think we're probably all in agreement with that. So, from a user perspective, we want to make sure that, you know, that it's not a hindrance to the trucks or anybody else as well. So, is that something that you think we need to have a separate discussion, Jim? Or is that something that we think we could make the decision here from the MINDOT perspective to leave it as is with still the opportunity to change it? I think that does go, bigger picture, all of our traffic control devices on the construction and detour route, there'd be changes likely throughout the project. As traffic patterns get established and we need to put additional signage at different locations along the detour route, we still need to be able to do that. This sounds like this is a pretty major, major issue though at this intersection. So, in a month from now, if we need to put it back, you know, what does that process need to look like? Do we just go out there and do that? Do we need to come back to the board? At that point, it's going to be our traffic on that route, so I'm not, I'm not quite clear on how, on what that will look like either. So, I guess maybe back to my initial question to Jim Michael. Do you think we need to have additional discussion on the MINDOT end? Or do you think that we would be able to be comfortable right now to say, okay, we can leave it as is and look into it further as needed once construction starts?
Michael, I would feel more comfortable being able to look at it in a little more detail prior to making the decision right now. Obviously, we had our rationale for making that decision. Again, as you stated, that wasn't what I thought the topic of the conversation would be, so I don't have all of that information right in front of me to know what kind of sight distance we're looking at. And there's a few things that I'd like to review prior to committing.
As Chair, I guess I'm asking the question, if we tabled this, if someone made that motion, how much time would you need to meet your deadlines and all of the scheduling and so forth to do this? I think we can have a special meeting and then if Attorney Hickon is still around, which I think she is, we'd have to talk about, could this be a discussion at a special meeting that we could have next week? And would a week be enough? So, I guess, first of all, if we delayed it a week, would this, this MINDOT timeline be able to provide us more information in regards to some of the concerns that are coming up?
I think from, I guess, I'm going to speak for Jim, but I would think in a week's time, we'd be able to gather some information about how that decision was made and come up with rationale, what we think at that intersection.
Okay, good. And then Attorney Hickon?
But beyond that, we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead and finish your comment there. And I was just going to ask the question of our attorney.
Okay. So, but beyond that, from a, from a timing perspective, I'm just going to lay what our next steps are. So, once we get a signed detour agreement with the board, we've got to revise our signing plans with our consultants. And then we need to work with our contractor to get all the new signs that we need made, ordered and made. And then we need to get those signs delivered and installed, of course, prior to the A.C. but made. So, the, the timing is of the essence, of course, just because we want to have those in advance. So, when we put the traffic on that detour route, which is really, it's just in a few weeks here. So, we need to renegotiate pricing with the contractor and get things ordered and so it's, the last, the next couple of weeks are going to go by quickly. And I'd have to work with our construction folks, but I, understanding where we're at here, we need to make sure that we can provide you the information about the traffic control device at that intersection, it sounds like, so that Jim can give you all the information to make the right decision from the county perspective.
Okay. Thank you. I think I know what Attorney Hickon's response is, but I'm going to ask, could this be an agenda item? Or is there some way we can bring this forward for some kind of decision and at least more information from MINDOT next week, on the, next Tuesday?
Mr. Chair, so long, this is Attorney Hickon, so long as you include this item in the purpose that's published as part of the notice for the special hearing, it can be addressed, I'm sorry, special meeting, it can be addressed at the special meeting. The concern with special meetings is that you keep all discussion and action within the scope of your published notice. So, that notice will be going for publication probably to the paper today, maybe tomorrow. But if the Commissioners so desire to add that to the purpose for next week's special meeting, they can do so.
Okay. Thank you. Just speaking from the Chair's perspective, it seems like it would be appropriate to ask for a motion to table this till next special meeting. So, unless there's other comments, I would open it up for a motion.
Mr. Chair, point of order, we're still in discussion from a previous motion. Over.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on the previous motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And after all this discussion, I don't think I can support the motion. And frankly, I like MINDOT's original plan. I think that is, is the safest route. And it does not, I witnessed multiple accidents at that intersection and that was not as a detour route at that time. And so, I only see greater risk at that intersection with higher traffic. And so, and I know this is contrary to what the community asked for, but I do believe the safest route is all traffic on 7. Over.
Okay. So, we have, I think what I'm hearing you say is that we have a motion in support and I asked if that could be tabled. And you're offering something different that is a question, should we, are you calling for a vote on, on the original motion with the second, with the four-way stop?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner DuKirk. Commissioner Mills, are you amending your motion to have all traffic on 7? Over.
Yes.
I support that as the second. Over.
Okay. So, it's understood that we're going to amend the original motion to have all the traffic go on the detour on 7. And so, I believe that we'll just have discussion on that and then move forward on it. So, any further discussion, I'll do a roll call on the amendment. Any other questions or understanding? We'll start with Commissioner Deshaun.
I will support that amendment.
Commissioner Mills?
I, I, I support the amendment. I failed to address the traffic control at the Fifth and Gunflint intersection. And so, the intention of that amendment is to have all traffic on 7, have no change to the intersection at Fifth and the Gunflint, just to clarify.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I accept how I understood it. Okay. Commissioner DuKirk?
That is also how I understood it. And as the second of the motion, I also support that. Over.
Commissioner Starling? Mr. Starling?
Yes. I'm just envisioning all of this happening on this particular stretch of the road. The motion would then not have MINDOT come back with another recommendation?
That's what I'm interpreting.
Okay.
Commissioner Mills, sir, do you have a comment to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is correct. This is just to implement MINDOT's original recommendation. Over.
Thank you. I would support.
And as far as my comment, it'd be very difficult for me to support this because I'm concerned about the school traffic, but I guess I'll just say I have very grave concerns about safety. But I think if that's where everyone's leaning, I certainly could support it with reservations, I guess, that we would reevaluate it. Because if there are safety concerns and some things happen, I would hope that we'd reevaluate it. So, I guess I will go back to our MINDOT people that if we go forward with this, is there going to be some kind of ongoing evaluation and monitoring saying, wait, this isn't working? Is that possible from what you're hearing from our discussion?
Yes. Yes, this is Michael. That would have been, even under the scenario as we presented earlier, if trucks were just on 7, that would have been what we would have done. So, all traffic there, we would do the same.
And what kind of timeline would that be if, I guess, it just waits to see what happens? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Burschine, this is Commissioner DuKirk. So, again, GES is on a truck route, traffic, high-traffic route, and people are safe. I'm just addressing your concern. This is a summer project and yes, things happen in that area on 7 during the summer. I completely understand that. But when we're weighing safety, I really believe it is But when we're weighing safety, I really believe it is safer to send all traffic down seven, and like you, I do have concerns and I am worried, but I also know that it was not that long ago that we had all traffic going down seven and not the Gunflint Trail. I think we, as a community, can come together and figure this out and make it safe. I think stopping loaded trucks on the Gunflint Trail, which is a designated truck route, is far more dangerous than what may happen. You know, if, if for some reason we could do construction in the winter and it was during a school season, I would have a different opinion, but I think that this is the best option, and I would like to thank Commissioner Mills for addressing this and moving the conversation and getting us around to this point. And again, this was the original recommendation of MINDOT, and so between MINDOT, the experts on their end, and Commissioner Dushaw, the expert in trucking, and us as a board, I know there's going to be citizens that are concerned, and I know that there's going to be fear in the community, but this is the safest way to move traffic. Over.
Any other comments? We'll go on a roll call vote then, for, I think, so everyone understand it, Commissioner Mills, would you restate your amendment to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Mills. The amendment to the motion is to have the route, the detour route for the Highway 61 project, have all traffic use County Road seven, and not modify the intersection of Fifth Avenue West and Gunflint Trail. Over.
So we'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner DuKirk?
Over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye. Over.
Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye. Over.
Commissioner Burschine, I'm just not going to, I'm going to abstain. I'm still uncomfortable, but I will, I will not vote against it either. Okay, so it passes?
You know, if there's a reason for you to abstain, is Molly still available?
I am, I recall, if, um, do we have three affirmative votes?
We have four.
Without the abstaining?
Right.
So what's the reason for abstaining in this case?
I, I'm uncomfortable with this change without more input from MINDOT, and it went through a process already, and so I don't want to vote for it, I don't want to vote against it, I would rather not vote, from abstaining.
And Commissioner DuKirk, are you challenging the chair's ability to, or authority to abstain?
I'm not challenging it, I'm just questioning it, because we don't use it often, and when it's used, it's because it's a direct impact financially to the person making the vote. I'm not challenging him at all.
Okay.
So I think, I, I think if Commissioner Burschine wants to abstain in this vote, he, he can do so. I'm, I'm not going to raise any challenge to it, especially since there are four affirmative votes, and it doesn't affect whether the action goes forward or not.
Good for me. Thank you.
I, yes, I guess I could further clarify it, that my background is working in schools, and so I may have a bias to some extent from that, and so that is part of it as well, is that, school safety is something I've been involved in and studied, and I have some concerns about this, but I think I don't want to vote against it. I guess I'm abstaining because I just have some real bias about my affiliation with school safety in my career. Okay, it passes. We will move on to Forest Restoration Project presentation. Do we have those people with us?
Mr. Chair, this is Kristin. Oh, is that Justin on the line? I'm sorry.
Hello. You can hear me?
Yes, Justin, I believe that's you. Do you want to start this presentation then? Welcome.
Yeah, unless Kristen wants to say anything first?
Uh, no, thank you, go ahead. I wanted to confirm that you were available this morning, because we didn't get a chance to chat yesterday.
Sure, yeah, thank you. And my name is Justin Zabour, and I'm a forester with the Nature Conservancy, and I'm also a resident of Cook County in District Four. And I want to thank Kristen Foster for help with the whole process, and for putting together the overview document that is attached to the meeting agenda. Hopefully you've all had a chance to preview it. So the Nature Conservancy is a large, international, environmental and conservation nonprofit. We are operationally subdivided into small, local operating units, so our forest team is based out of Duluth, and we've been, over the past 12 years, doing a lot of tree planting and forest restoration work across Cook, Lake, and St. Louis counties in partnership with Forest Service, the DNR, and other agencies. Recently, a private family foundation has provided us with funding to initiate forest restoration work on public land along Highway 61. And you may be aware of several successful programs Sugarloaf has established to facilitate forest restoration work on private property, and we see this as an opportunity to extend that work under the public land. So, last year, we started at Cascade, Cascade River State Park, we did about 40 acres, and this year, we would like to extend the work areas going east towards Thompsonite Beach and Cutface Creek, as well as west along Cascade Beach Road, Rayburg and Wayside, and Onion River, and some other areas. So the work entails first, cut brush to remove competition for planted trees, planting white pine, white cedar, and white spruce seedlings, and installing tree protection shelters around the white pine and white cedar to prevent deer browse, deer, deer from killing these planted trees. We'll be planting about 200 white spruce per acre, 50 white pine, and 20 white cedar. The timeline for this work would be between early May and mid-June, and will take between one and two weeks to complete. Nearby residents are most likely to notice the noise of the brush saws used to clear the brush, which are a bit like really large, overpowered spring trimmers, kind of sound like chainsaws. But this process, cutting the brush, can only take two to three days, so it's pretty So in light of, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, we are definitely aware of the risks of going through with the work. We have a detailed and pretty robust safety plan in place to address this risk, and we are closely following updates to guidelines from the CDC, the State of Minnesota, and other organizations, and we will modify our plans or even cancel them if conditions seem to warrant that. And I can send this document to anybody who is interested. But I will highlight a few key points. The labor crews who will be completing the work will be staying in Aurora, Minnesota, in St. Louis County, and traveling to Cook County each morning and returning to St. Louis County at the end of each workday, so they will not be staying in Cook County. And the company, the contracted company who these crews worked for, has implemented several additional practices to minimize community exposure within Aurora, and those practices virtually eliminate community exposure while they are here in Cook County working. We will be providing them with water, soap, and hand sanitizer for frequent hand washing, rubber pumps, and masks to use when necessary, as well as bleach, buckets, and drags for gently destructive tools, vehicles, and their motor tools. So if you look at the documents that is attached to the agenda, there are, the second two pages include the map, and I want to point out two things. First, the maps are of the proposed polygons along Cascade Beach Road, where we would like to do this work on, this is county-owned land. If our project is approved, I will visit each of those polygons, those parcels, and flag the boundaries of the specific areas in which we will work. Though not all of those areas that are outlined on the map will necessarily be treated. Secondly, we have added an area at the Ray Burgland Wayside, covering about two or three acres, and that includes three parcels also owned by Cook County, and some neighboring parcels owned by DNR parks. So in early January, I mailed letters explaining the purpose and nature of this project and the potential impact to residents, to the 45 owners of property adjacent to or near the proposed work areas at Cascade Beach Road and Ray Burgland Wayside, and requesting responses and comments. And I received responses from four property owners, all of whom expressed support for the project. Two reported that they have noticed the poor forest condition in the area, and two have been conducting similar tree planting work on their own property for years. And no property owner has reported any concerns or objections. So I'm requesting from the board approval for us to pursue this project this spring, and what our next step would be.
Okay, thank you. Highway Engineer Foster, do you have any other comments before I open it up to the board?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I wanted to share is this could be of interest to multiple county departments, which is why it's coming before the county board for discussion. It started out with Land Services, and Lisa Kerr at the time directed it over to the Highway Department, because the section they're proposing to work in is county right-of-way, not county land. So I just wanted to provide that background as to how it came before the board for discussion.
And so, a question back to you is, this was listed as discuss next step. So is that the discussion point? Or, but I think I heard Justin say something about wanting approval to go ahead with it. Please clarify that.
If the commissioners feel that Justin and his team have done sufficient work to start, you could consider.
Okay.
And I didn't feel comfortable giving that recommendation as your highway engineer, because it's a little bit out of the scope of the highway business that I usually deal with.
Okay. Okay, so questions, comments, I believe that we could take action on this if it's approved, so they could start the project. So, understanding that it would need our approval, is that correct, Highway Engineer Foster, that in order for them to do this work, they would need our approval?
Mr. Chair, yes. With your direction, I would give the approval to work with St. County right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, so any questions, comments? Commissioner Starley?
Yes, thank you. I've driven this area evidently for quite a few years. I've observed what they've done in Cascade Park area, and thank you to sending out the letters to the residents. I know some of them have tried to supplement on their own property, better trees, you know, coverage for keeping away the deer and all of that. So I think this would be a great project, and thank you for bringing it here, and to Highway Engineer Foster for helping us to understand how we can beautify our area more. So thanks again to everyone. Over.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Mills. Hi, Justin, thank you for, for the presentation and for the request. Good to hear from you. I do have three questions. The first of which is pretty frivolous, but just looking at the maps, I'm really curious about the colors of the vegetation. It looks like there, there's some, there's some that are red, and I'm assuming these are different types of trees, so I'm just kind of curious about that, that shading. The second one, I'm, I'm curious about the percentages of white pine, white spruce, and cedar. I'm not familiar with white spruce having a hard gold bit up here, but the other two, I'm very familiar with having a hard gold, so I was just curious about that. And then, thirdly, I was, I was wondering if there's any burden on the county for, if we approve this project, if there's anything, any obligation that we have in regards to maintenance or, or protection or anything like that. And that's all. Thank you. Over.
Okay. Justin?
Yeah, thank. Sure, thank you. So, the imagery, we, we, I often use the National Agricultural Imagery Program aerial photos. They use a color infrared photography system to, to take these photographs, and they do it in the fall, so you can really see the distinctions between trees pretty well. So, it kind of takes some interpretation. Red is often the kind of broadleaf trees, is they're starting to turn color and lose their leaves, and darker greens are typically conifer species, but it's not always the case. You kind of have to also look at the texture and things, but that's kind of generally how it can be useful. We are planting, or we are planting mostly white spruce, about 200 per acre. That is, you're right, it's kind of one of the easier species to grow in this area. It's not browsed by deer. It's kind of our assurance that we are reestablishing forests, that so many of these areas are mostly comprised of brush and dying birch. So that's why we use a lot of, you know, we use more spruce, because the cedar and pine require fencing, which is expensive. So, we want a component of cedar and pine, so we invest kind of a lot of money in a small number of trees, but then we also plant a larger number of spruce to, to be sure we have a forest in the end, without spending too much money. And there will be, there's, there will be no burden to the county for this at all, as far as maintenance or anything. We're, and I'll continue to work with Kristen to make sure we have appropriate spacing, you know, from roadways and power lines to, you know, make sure that any of these planted trees won't be causing problems in, you know, 50 to 100 years. But, of course, anything can happen in that amount of time, so we can't foresee everything, but we're going to do our best to, to make sure we're not kind of creating a burden for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Yes. Commissioner Mills?
Just a follow-up question. Thank you, Justin, for that. That gives, that gives, you know, that answered everything, and I just raised one more question. Now it's, so are you saying that nothing will be fenced? Over.
Clarify, the county will not fence anything?
Um, thanks. I'm sorry, we'll, we'll.
Yes, we will have approximately 30, I believe about 30 trees per acre will have individual fence, like hooped fences around them. And an additional 20 or 30 trees per acre will have a less expensive and smaller tree shelter.
Okay. Okay, is that satisfactory to you, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no other questions. Thank you very much, Justin. Over.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner DuKirk, comments, questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for addressing the COVID situation and how this team will work with that. And my only question is, have you met the firewise standards with this project? Over.
That is a great question, yeah. And I would probably have to look, look more closely at specifically what the firewise standards layout again, I haven't, I haven't looked at those in a while now. I, I'm gonna guess that because of both Highway 61 and numerous power lines in the area that they serve as substantial firebreak. But you raised a very good point, and I think we would do well to look, to look at those more closely and consider what effect our project would have.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner DuKirk, based upon this response, would you think it'd be best to sort of delay the next step issue till further board meeting? Is that what you're getting at?
No.
I guess I'd like to.
No, not at all. The firewise standards are available online and it sounds like this group is very organized and has looked into many aspects of this project. And so I believe that they'll be responsible and take a look at that. And it's on county property. You know, firewise standards, many of them are for housing, but we have done some updates for ditching and right-of-way and other things like that. And I think it'll be very easy to meet it. And this area, you know, there's concerns for soil erosion, and so doing plantings is very appropriate to kind of help with that. And I think Soil and Water would be glad to see this project moving forward. Obviously, I haven't talked to them about that and I shouldn't speak for them, but I think that this is a good thing for the community. It's not only about beautification, it's about preserving what we have.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Deshaun?
No questions. I think what they've done so far looks really good down there, and I'm hoping the next section looks as good. Thanks.
Okay. And I don't have any. I think it's a very good project. So I guess I would open it up for a motion to go ahead and approve carrying this forward. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Starley? Yes, Commissioner Starley? Make a motion to approve the nature conservancy to move ahead with the forest restoration project on Highway 61 and between, Highway 61 and Cascade Beach Road. Over.
Thank you. Do we have a board or second?
Commissioner Mills, second. Over.
Okay. Any more questions or comments before we do a roll call? Okay, roll call vote on the motion and support. Commissioner Deshaun?
Aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye, over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye, over.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye, over.
Commissioner Bershon?
Aye.
Very good. Unanimous. Thank you, Justin, for all your work on this and coming before us today. And it sounds like a great project.
Great. Well, thank you all for addressing our proposal.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to County Road 45 Design Service update, which will be, I believe, approving a contract amendment to previous contracts. So it's turned over to Highway Engineer Foster for that now.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners and colleagues and community members. I will go through this rather quickly in the interest of time, but of course be available for any questions. The County Road 45 project has been in the works for quite a long time. One of the comments that we heard at our most recent public meeting, based on some things we discovered during the design process, was that we should look at making a straight crossing of the Cascade River along County Road 45, rather than leaving it as the S-curves where it's like it currently sits today. And part of the reason is because one of the curves is rather close to the Cascade River itself. So the bulk of the reason for today's amendment request is to inform the board, it would cost about $55,950 to explore that alternative. The reason that I'm putting it forward as a recommendation is because the work that needs to be done to explore that alternative could be used in the future if it's not incorporated as part of this current project. So even if it's not an alternative that the Cook County eventually approves for the initial phase of County Road 45, it would not be a work that goes to waste if this is a realignment or work that needs to occur at some point in the future. The requested amendment from LHB also includes an amount of $17,106.2, which is about a 3% increase in their design fee for the project. And the reason for that is the amount of time that we have spent exploring different alternatives for County Road 45. I think that work has been well worth it. I think it's important to keep the community engaged in this project. And this contract has been hanging out there for a long time. It was either 2017 or maybe even 2016 when Cook County originally approved the County Road 45 project with LHB, and it was a much different scope at that time. So those are the two components of this amendment request. One would be the $17,000 for LHB's fee increase in project management over the course of time because this project has run out a little bit longer than I think anyone anticipated when it was originally executed. And the second piece would be just about $56,000 to put in a little bit more work to explore the options for how that rough road should look in the area of the Cascade River specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? We'll go by roll call. Commissioner DuKirk?
Nope, it all looks great. Thanks for the information. Over.
Commissioner Deshaun?
This will be coming out of what, the bond funds or where?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Deshaun, yes, this, those fees were part of the 2018 bond funds and due to underruns on some other projects, including County Road 17, there are funds available to cover this request. It would not be local funds.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Starley?
Well, thank you, Kristen, for working on that. And I think we need to keep on moving because it's been, like you said, a long project. So thanks for the work. Over.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And thank you, Kristen, for the update here. And I was confused because I thought that was always part of the project. So thank you for clarifying that, that straightening is a new, is a new alternative that is being looked at. And I do agree that the $17,000 is well worth it for us to explore these alternatives and really take the time to listen to the residents who live on County Road 45 and beyond and who use that road. So I don't think I have any questions beyond that, so just thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, and I don't have any. Thanks for your work on that, and it's always good to update. And yes, this has been carried on for a time, but it's still a work in progress and I think it's improving. So it's very worth the, the extra money, I think, to do that, to do it more deliberately and to do the best we can before we really get it finished. So I would entertain a motion to approve this contract amendment on County Road 45.
This is Commissioner Mills. I move to approve the County Road 45 contract amendment. Over.
Starley, support.
Okay, Starley, support. Questions or comments? I'll just open it up. I don't, I didn't think that there were some issues in our previous roll call, so if anyone has a last comment on that, then I'll call for the vote. Okay, Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye, over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye, over.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye, over.
Commissioner Deshaun?
Aye.
Allowed? Commissioner Bershon, aye. So practice unanimous, please. Very good. Thank you, Highway Engineer Foster, for all your work on this.
Thank you for your support.
I'm just gonna ask people, generally, do you want to continue with the agenda or do you need a five-minute break?
I think we could use a five-minute break.
Go ahead. I heard Commissioner Starley say a five-minute break.
You heard Rena say a five-minute break.
Okay. Okay, so let's go re, reconnect together in about 10, let's just go 10:40, take eight minutes, okay? We'll talk to you later. Okay, I'm gonna check to see if we got everyone with us. Commissioner Starley, are you with us? Commissioner Starley, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Mills?
I'm here.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Here.
Commissioner DeShaw?
He stepped away for a minute. I'll let you know when he's back.
Would you let me know when he's back?
I will do that.
Who's going to be presenting the land services? Said Tim?
I believe so.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very, okay. Thank you.
He went down that hallway. So would you say?
He went that way.
Okay.
Commissioner DeShaw is back.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll start with the vacation rental license program status update. Mr. Nelson is with us and will give us this update. Thank you for joining us today, Tim.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners and everyone else. I first have to basically apologize as I looked at the agenda and I noticed that the report wasn't highlighted blue, it's not in late, so it, for some reason, wasn't included in on the agenda, the actual report. I plugged it into iCompass, but I must not have hit the right button or so. So I basically went and cut and pasted that in and emailed that out to you this morning. So at least you have, the commissioners should have a written copy of the report there. And I'll say, basically, what this is, it is listed as informational only and this is a snapshot in time. I've had a few discussions with a few commissioners and there was some interest in saying, okay, what is the, what is the kind of catch of the program? We passed the ordinance last summer in terms of licensing of vacation rentals and the ordinance became effective January 1st of this year. We have been working with a third-party vendor, Host Compliance, to get the website and the registration and advertising, monitoring and everything all put into place. We started working with them towards the late fall into the early winter and we ran into some, some issues, technical issues in getting the website up, but ultimately the website for the licensing and registration got up in late January and early February. Now, as per the ordinance, we have, all operations have until the end of May to go ahead and apply for the licenses and as in every issue that we have facing us today, the COVID-19 situation has kind of made a lot of things uncertain, as the best as I can state it. So this is just a snapshot in time. I'm not looking for any action today. I will probably be back next month in May to discuss this further and see what direction we should or should not go, but at this point, this is just information only. So just to state that, you know, you're gonna see a lot of kind of bulk numbers there. As we've been working on this for over the years, we've had a few different lists of operations that are out there, a total number of operations. And you have the Minnesota Department of Health list, you have the list that County Inspector's office did, you have the list now that Host Compliance did by putting it together and monitoring all of the advertising that's out there. So you're gonna have different numbers from each of the lists, but what we, what we did in coordination of getting the website put together is Joseph Ruth is our staff member that's been running the point on this, and he basically took all of the lists and we compiled them into one master list that we have in our department for all of this. And we basically have worked with Host Compliance to send out the letters to not only everybody that's on their list, but we had also sent a batch of letters ourselves out to those that Host Compliance didn't pick up, but that we know of because of the other list that we have. Okay. So basically, there are what we estimate as about 270 rental operations that would meet our criteria to need the vacation rental license. We sent out all the letters to all of those. We have received back in 134 applications. Of those, and this is a little bit of an update even from the written numbers that you would have before you, of those 134 that have submitted applications, 127 of them have already been approved. Three were rejected only because, two of them didn't qualify as vacation rentals because they were attached to resorts, and then another one was a duplicate application. So of the four remaining now, you have three that still have to apply to the Department of Health for their license and one has to basically reconcile the lodging tax situation for 2019. So we're in a position where we have approximately half of the number of operations that we expect are out there. We have received word from some of those that they actually do not intend to operate this year, so we're just kind of waiting out into this next month to see what kind of application rate that we're gonna see as we go into that, that last, into May, as we look at it. Now, I would say financially, implications as you look down further on that list, we're in a kind of decent spot at this point because we had already incurred the costs for our third-party vendor getting the website and everything put together and the applications that we've received in now are pretty much basically sufficient just to cover that vendor activity and the contract that we have. So we anticipate some additional staffing costs to be associated with that, although we're trying to be as prudent as we can with those costs. I will say that we've had pressure, a little bit of pressure on both sides of this argument. There's been some discussions out there, why are people still using it, how can the counties still allow vacation rentals to happen? And I think the county attorney did an excellent job in the articles that she's put out, kind of explaining why they still are able to go ahead and length out and such. And we've had some pressure from the other side, a request asking that we go ahead and basically suspend the program, but return or refund all of the application fees that have been submitted and we certainly are not prepared to submit any kind of recommendation or anything to the board as a result of those questions. We are kind of talking internally about what might be or might not be appropriate for that, but at this point in time, as I said, we're kind of at a break-even point with this and if we were to refund all of the fees, we would find ourselves in a pretty, pretty healthy deficit. So the costs are already incurred, so they will either be incurred by the vacation rental industry themselves or by the general, by the taxpayers. So that is something that we will probably discuss further and I will bring back to the board for further discussion within the next, next month. So I just wanted to bring those numbers in real quick for a, just kind of a snapshot in time of the program that's going and the one thing that has basically surprised us is that as this COVID-19 situation has progressed, the number of applications that we still do receive in on a fairly continued basis. So people are still interested, but there is a lot of apprehension and a lot of uncertainty out there, which is why I'm certainly not proposing any specific actions to change anything and will, I'll be, as I indicated, coming back next month for a little bit more discussion and with that, I'll just go ahead and leave it for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. So questions, comments? Commissioner DuKirk?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I've only had one citizen talk to me about not having the program operating this year because of COVID-19. And honestly, because of COVID-19 is one more reason why we should have the program running. It is just one more oversight, I guess, that you have it. Obviously, we're not adding COVID-19 questions to your application, but it just lets people know that we're using every opportunity we have to implement safety and protect people who come visit here, so I would not end the program at this point. Over.
Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. I'm wondering, Tim and anyone else, would there be a point where we would put a moratorium on all the rentals with what we already have and what new applications are? We're getting a lot and it's just a thought. Over.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, would you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Starley. That is a conversation I have to have with the county attorney as to what level of ability we do have. I do know that there is an ability for us to institute an interim ordinance or a moratorium on things. Those are certainly under, under unique circumstances and I guess this is about as unique a circumstance as we could be facing. So I think it's a possibility, but to the length and depth that it goes, I would need to further discuss that with the, with the county attorney before giving him final determination, which is one of the conversations I wanted to have before coming back next month. You know, there's, there's other options we have out there too of extending our deadline for the applications and such until there's a more certainty of what direction this is all going and such. But yeah, at this point, I can't definitively answer that.
Okay, well, I'll address that later. Commissioner DeShaw?
No questions.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. Thank you, Tim, for the presentation. I do not have any questions at this time. Over.
Okay. And I do not have any. Thanks for the update, Tim, and we'll look forward to having this coming forward again in May with some more information and possibly any direction that we want to take. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we'll go to the auditor and we did pull a gambling permit, so Brady Powers, are you with us?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So let's go with the gambling permit.
Yeah, and I've heard, heard the question. I have been in contact with TOSB, with the applicant, and they are following the guidelines. They fully intend to follow any state, county guidelines. This is in the hope that they're able to have this event and if they're not, they fully intend not to have, to cancel the event, depending on the status, you know, the state's status, county status and so forth.
Okay. So I guess we'll go ahead and have people comment by roll call about their thoughts on this and suggestions. So I'll start with Commissioner DuKirk.
I'd be more comfortable until tabling this to our first meeting in May. Allegedly, the restrictions will be pulled by the governor at that point and if they're not, we'll have a better idea. I just, I don't think it's a good message for the board to approve things like this right now. Over.
Okay. Commissioner DeShaw?
I agree with Heidi on that, come back the first or second meeting in May, I guess, or the regular meeting.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner DuKirk, for pulling this item from the consent agenda. I, I thought if you hadn't done it, I would have asked to do it and I just thought that we should talk a little bit more about it, just about the optics of it, about the practicality of it and, you know, this, this event, my understanding is it, it doesn't, you know, and it's not, it's not bringing in a whole lot of people from out of the area and so on that side, you know, the risk. You can, you can take that as you will for the, for the risk factor and then on that same side, it is easier to, for us to delay this decision because of that as far as coordinating the event is concerned. So I think I would, I would agree with tabling it until, until we know more. Over.
Okay. Commissioner Starley?
Well, you know, I think they were just thinking ahead as, as all events are. It's their bingo that they do the Fourth of July, so maybe April is a little bit too early to think about it, so we certainly could address it in May, depending upon how the governor is, you know, addressing our distancing and how far we can travel. So that's fine. Over.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burshon? Commissioner Burshon?
Yeah.
This is, this is Rena. Molly had sent us a comment that I'd like to just read, to throw it into the mix.
This is Molly Hick and I'm back on the line.
Oh. Well, then she can read her own comment.
Which item are we on?
We are on the gambling permit.
Okay, I'm not sure if you've had discussion yet on this?
We have.
Yes, we have. We're, we're, the discussion so far is, you know, Brady presented us the information. We did a roll call, comment, and pretty much all the commissioners individually have indicated a willingness to table this till May, so that, that is where we're at right now. And then it was mentioned that, that you had written something about this event and what our prerogatives are, our authority is. So is that enough information for you?
Yes.
And Molly, I'll just mention that I have been in contact with the organization, Church, and they fully intend to comply with any orders or guidelines that are in effect either from the state or the county. So in any case, whatever action you take, they're gonna comply.
Okay.
Well, that's good. No, thank you, Mr. Powers. Mr. Chair, I'll just offer a comment, if I may?
Sure. Go ahead.
I think it is a fine solution to table this matter and see how things shake out in the world of the COVID-19 response. I had also offered to the commissioners in my email comment that should you wish to proceed with some action and you otherwise approve of this gambling permit application, but you just have concerns related to the pandemic, that you could, and this is an option for the next time you address this too, should it be tabled, you could add some conditional language. I think it could say something similar to that permit application is approved on the condition that holding the event is not contrary to CDC and Minnesota Department of Health guidelines nor in violation of state law at the time of the event. So that's all that I got to offer on that. Thank you.
Good. And I guess that could be something we could have proposed to us when we take this up again, if that, if that's the wish of the board. Okay, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to table this.
Motion to table, DuKirk.
Okay, thank you. Support, for a second.
Starley, support.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye. Over.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye. Over.
Commissioner Burschon, aye. Over. Good suggestion. So we'll table this to a further meeting. We'll move on now to property tax relief during the noble coronavirus outbreak. We had a PDF on this, and we had a resolution proposed thanks to Mr. Powers and Ms. Hickin for their work on that. And so we'll go forward with that. And who would, I guess we'll turn it over to you, Auditor Brock Powers, on one.
Mr. Chair, yeah. We discussed this last week. So the recommendation is by resolution to abate property tax penalties for all properties excluding those paid by escrow until July 16th, 2020. And summary, this is the same basically as what's in the resolution, that business limitations and closures due to the Corona outbreak have led to significant drop in business revenue and consequent spike in unemployment and underemployment. First half property tax payments are due on May 15th, and for many are a burden they may not be able to manage at this time. The county has limited ability to provide property tax relief, given the constraints of state law, but have some ability to abate current penalties. So the purpose would be to provide tax relief without impacting needed services provided by all taxing entities within Cook County. Those who are not severely impacted by the economic impact of the virus are expected to pay the property taxes by May 15th to ensure the uninterrupted provision of needed services by local governments who depend on property taxes to provide those services. The reason for not allowing escrow property taxes to escape penalty is that escrow property taxes have already been collected from property taxpayers, and there is no need to abate that penalty. Financial implications for the county and other taxing entities are uncertain, but each entity has determined that they are manageable in the short term. And I'll just report, as of yesterday, our property tax collections are at $2,341,037. Last year, as of almost the same date, actually three days later, was $2,833,00806. So right now, we stand at about 83% of our collections last year. So there's no sense of alarm due to collections. They seem to be coming in mostly as normal. So from that standpoint, don't see, of course, the bulk come in in the last two weeks in May, but at least at this point, it does not point to any sense of alarm.
Okay.
And I would ask for any questions?
Sure. And I'll just make one comment. I don't know if other commissioners were involved, but I attended a webinar yesterday with Governor Walz and with the Association of Minnesota Counties. We did have an update on this issue, property tax relief. A lot of counties are waiting for something to happen at the state. But as of yesterday, there was 17 counties that said they had some kind of property release resolution passed or very close to it, and 56, no. But when asked in the future, no property tax relief has been decided by 22 counties, but 30 more are considering it. And so of those 17, yes, there was a combination of delaying the penalty or delaying the payment. And so they were lowering the penalty, that was primarily the one. So, but that could change. So that just gives us a snapshot of what's happening at the state level. There's really no, just way to indicate really what the legislature is going to do right now because they're focusing so much on COVID-19, and that was what was reported in respect to state action. So let's just go with questions, comments on this resolution. Commissioner Dushaw?
I think this is, if the resolution passes, it gives the people that haven't paid time to pay without any penalty. I have seen a few comments on social media about how they were going to pay their property tax, so hopefully this helps them out.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Brady, for working on that. And I think that looks like we're, those that can pay will be up by the May 15th, and it offers some help for those folks who have been hit hard with other events in our county. So thank you for working on that. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And yeah, I, there's not a whole lot we can do. We can't change the date of when payments are due, but as previously stated, we can change the penalty in the way that, and I think that's what we can do and it's what we should do. Over.
Okay. Commissioner DuKirk?
So Brady, we're going to relieve them of penalties, but what about interest? Do they still have to pay that? Over.
There is no interest in the current year. Interest doesn't start until you become delinquent, so that would be in January, January 1st. If this went on that far, that's something we'd have to consider, but we don't have that leeway that we do. There'd have to be some legal opinions before we took any action on interest, I think. This one, we clearly in the law have some ability to manage, but we won't have to face that till January.
Great. Thank you.
And as far as my comments, I know that for those that are doing this, most have gone with the two months. And just for our listeners, Commissioner, Auditor Powers had reached out to the other entities that we collect taxes for, and it seemed like two months would be the best way to proceed because some of their budgets would be hurting if we went beyond that two months. So that's why the two months, and it's most common in the state, there's one county that has extended it out to August, to my understanding, but that's only one of all those that have reported so far. So with that, I think if there are any more further comments or questions, I'll do a last call on that before calling for a motion. Okay, so I would call for a motion to approve the resolution as stated.
So moved, Commissioner DuKirk.
Commissioner.
Okay.
Commissioner Mills, second.
Okay. Any more questions, comments, discussions? We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner DuKirk?
Approve. Over.
Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye. Over.
Mr. Mills?
Commissioner Mills, aye. Over.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye. Over.
Commissioner Burschon, aye. Half the seat unanimously. Thanks for your work on this, Brady, and also, you know, our attorney weighed in on it as well, and it seems like a very good thing to do, and we're doing the best we can, I guess, with the authority we have so far. And so we'll go on to, we'll go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, and then we'll plan to look at those penalty rates starting July 16th, I think it was, at the next meeting in May, May 19th.
Right.
And that schedule works for Emsys, who will be changing those penalty rates for us.
Yes. So we've had a rate, and we'll just have to consider whether this should just continue like it did, you know, the penalty assessed from the May basis and start all over in July, or would we have a higher accelerated rate? And there's counties just doing various things on that as well, so we'll address that in May. Thank you. Go to our interim administrator, and the first item needs to approve resignation and posting for highway engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This is with great regret on my part, and I know that I've received a number of comments from the community about the outstanding job that Kristin Foster has done for us, and what a good agreement that has been for us with Lake County to share that service. But she has turned in her resignation, I think, as everyone pretty much knows, and so this is, we need to approve that resignation and approve a posting for us to go out to hire a new highway engineer.
Okay. So we'll open it up for comments or questions in regards to the resignation and posting. Commissioner Dushaw, I'll start with you.
I guess I don't have a whole lot of comments. I'll make the motion to accept her resignation with regret that Kristin was a great asset to Cook County. She came in here, and she did a lot of work, you know, from one end of the county to the other, and I wish her luck at her new position at Minda.
So we'll just hold your motion until we hear from the others, and then we'll go back to the discussion. Uh, Commissioner DuKirk?
Oh, one of the rare times Commissioner DuKirk is speechless. Kristin changed the feeling of my district. There was tremendous strength, stress, and angst, and frustration. There was a lot of distrust, a lot of anger towards actions being done. And in the short time that Kristin has been here, she has traveled the Gunflint Trail with me, met with the scenic byway committee, met with community members, and turned around the attitudes and feelings. And I want the employees who are listening at the highway department, the community wasn't angry at you. They have always appreciated the work that you do, but the face of the highway department in the past caused strain in my community. And so I think moving forward, as sad as this is and as difficult as this is to lose Kristin, we are in a much greater place. She has made it possible for people to look at Cook County and want to be the highway engineer here, and she has made it possible for the community to have trust in what is happening again. And so there is no way to explain my gratitude for what she's done in the short time that she has been here. It's just impossible to put it into words. So thank you very much. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and yeah, I would echo the sentiment of other commissioners, and just I have never, not once, heard a complaint of Kristin and her work, and that says a lot, considering about the complaints I've heard about previous engineers before I was elected as well as after I was elected. And she completely changed the culture, and like Commissioner DuKirk said, the face of the department as well as the face of the county, and she did that. Engineer Foster did that while, you know, straddling both Cook County and Lake County positions, and that's by no means an easy task. And so I have no doubt she'll excel in her career, and I look forward to working with her again in the future. Over.
Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. She brought a high degree of professionalism to our county, and I'm eternally grateful for that, her openness and working with people and helping us understand where we need to look for money and where we can't, and all of the great things that she has worked with us. The bar is high, but I think we will reach ourselves to a higher limit in terms of how we can help support an engineer also on our part. Over.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to say to Kristin that, number one, the gratitude, and I think this has been expressed so much for just making such a big difference. But also congratulations because you're using your skills and talents and experiences to serve a broader area of our state, and so congratulations on that and gratitude that you're going to be there. But for all you've done, you've got, you know, there's always case studies about leadership for administrators, and everyone has their weaknesses, everyone has their strengths, and I haven't seen any weaknesses in you at all. And I guess that's the highest compliment and analysis I could give of someone's profile in being an administrator and a leader, and also a very, very astute in engineering skills. So thank you so much. So with that, we'll approve a motion to approve the resignation and posting for the highway engineer.
Mr. Chair, this is Attorney Hickin. May I interrupt?
Sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
I may be mistaken, but I didn't hear an effective date of the resignation. Was that on the record?
It will be May 26th.
Thank you.
May 26th. So thank you for catching us. So the motion would include May 26th. So I'll call for a motion to that effect.
This is Commissioner Mills. I second Commissioner Dushaw's motion. Over.
Okay. I didn't hear it, so, oh, that's right. Thank you for going back there. Very good. So with that, any more comments or questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Start with Commissioner Starley.
Over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye. Over.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Can we all abstain because we're not impartial on this? Just kidding. Aye. Over.
Well, clever. Thank you. And I'm aye, so half the seat unanimously, so May 26th. With that, then, we'll go on to interim highway engineer, and we received, we have a PDF in our pocket, and we're requesting approval to pursue an independent contract, but I believe there's some change in language that was discussed on Monday, yesterday, that it would be, it would be an interim department head. So we can talk more about that, but I believe there's some technical issues or legal issues there with how we can go ahead and pursue the contract. I guess I would ask for further clarification from that from our interim administrator. I wanted to just bring that up, so we can address it. So go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I just would like to say that one of the, just the professionalism that we see from Kristin was immediately, she started thinking about transition and presented us with a couple of of options of other professionals who could serve in an interim capacity, so that we had a good time to, enough time to do a little bit of overlap with her and really prepare, be in a better spot for our summer maintenance and projects. So I truly appreciate, again, her professionalism and her thoughtfulness in this time of transition. So she has, had presented the name of Mike Tardy, who's, who actually served in Cook County as highway engineer in 1988 through 1992. And he has, when I talked to members at the Highway Department, they, the ones who had actually went back that far and had worked with them, had good things to say about him, and I think that this will be a good option for us. We've been moving in a direction, I think, of hiring him as a temporary employee, and I think that's probably the direction it will go.
Hello?
But... Hello?
Hello?
You all still there?
I'm sorry, I think I heard Commissioner Mills say hello.
Yep. So, anyway, so, so I know that Attorney Hickon has some things she's checking out. I will allow her, I ask her, I guess, allow her, I'll ask her if she'd like to share what, how this will proceed, but hopefully we can address this very soon, next week, and so that we have a couple of weeks of overlap.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from Attorney Hickon on that, or we'll just go ahead and go to the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, this is Attorney Hickon. I would appreciate, well, I need to offer my apology that I'm asking that we delay this. I know that it's, we're interested in getting somebody hired, and that there are people lining up, which is great, and we don't want to lose those opportunities. And I expect that we'll go forward with a temporary hire. There are just a couple of legal issues that I need to sort out, and so what I'm asking the Commissioners to do today is to, is to include this issue in the purpose for next week's special meeting. As we discussed earlier in this meeting, you are permitted to address this at the special meeting next week, so long as, when you publish the notice for that meeting, you include this item in the purpose. And I've already provided some language to April's number for that purpose. I can go into further detail about why, I believe, or the things I think we need to sort out, but essentially, has to do with what our statutory authority is to have somebody in the county engineer position, and how we define this person who's kind of holding the place before we appoint a new highway engineer for a period of four years. And I think that this is just going to take a couple of conversations, probably with Kristin Foster, and somebody from Mendota, and somebody from MCIT, but I will work quickly to get a recommendation for the board ready for next week.
Okay. Very good. So we'll just do a little roll call, quick comment, or questions that can be brought forward, maybe at the next meeting or address now, so. Commissioner DuPerrit?
I'm good at waiting for the update next week. Over.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. So, there's no risk in delaying for a week? Is that correct? Over.
This is Rena. I would, I would say that there's always a risk with delaying, but hopefully it's minimal.
Okay. Commissioner Deschaux?
You'll have this ready to go for next Tuesday, Molly?
Yes, that's my intent. I'll do my burr got.
Okay.
Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Molly, for doing that. I think it's important that we have the correct verbiage on this and look through everything. So, thank you on that. Over.
Okay, so we'll bring this forward to our next meeting next week. We'll talk to the unified lease program.
So, as we approach a budget season with a lot of constraints and unknowns, I'm trying to look ahead to see if there are places where we can make some smart decisions that not only affect spending and reduce risk in the short term, but also have a long-term impact in help stabilizing our budget. One of the things that the Sheriff's Office took on either last year or the year before was looking at a lease program through Enterprise. Enterprise, I think as you all know, is a premier partner with AMC, and currently over 60 cities and counties in Minnesota actually are taking part in this program because of the significant cost savings and other benefits. Some of the issues that counties like ours face is that our fleets get old, and we have a lot of older vehicles, and older vehicles tend to be problematic because they have higher maintenance costs, they don't have as many, you know, safety features. For example, anything older than 2007, which we have a number of vehicles in that category, don't have standard anti-lake, anti-lock brakes. And anything older than 2012 doesn't have standardized electronic stability control. So both of those are clearly safety features that we would like to have in our vehicles, that we all like to have in our personal vehicles as well, and the electronic stability control specifically in the winter driving that we do. As vehicles get older, their miles per gallon goes down, but newer vehicles also have higher standards, and newer vehicles have less maintenance costs. So a lot of this is about looking at what the optimal time to replace a vehicle is. We have a number of vehicles over 10 years old in our fleet. Most of our fleet is over 10 years old, actually. And what, what they're telling us is that the optimal time to replace a vehicle is actually about four years because of fuel efficiency, depreciation, and resale value, and increased maintenance costs. One of the other things that you have to take into account with county vehicles is that actually we have kind of low annual mileage, shorter trips or not as frequent trips. It's not that daily driving that we do for our own personal stuff. So I think we have an opportunity to standardize our fleet and optimize it, get, get to the place where there, there's less maintenance cost, better gas mileage. We get in, we can get into a pattern of replacement that allows us to actually have a very stable budget on that and have safer vehicles for our staff. It's, it's actually an opportunity to save money short-term and long-term. So I had sent in the budget a couple of different, a couple of different scenarios that they sent. One of them was replacing everything, all 17 vehicles. Another one was replacing six right away and then spreading things out over five years. Either way, I mean, there's cost, the cost savings more if you do everything at once, but either way, there's an opportunity to save tens of thousands of dollars over, actually, each year. So, so in just looking at that, this is really informational, I'm going to let Brady weigh in. I think one of the other opportunities that we have, though, is opportunity to improve the usage of our, of our fleet. About, I don't know if it's half or two-thirds of our fleet is actually sort of designated for departmental use for field workers and land services, soil and water, those, those folks that do a lot of field work, they, they have designated vehicles. But we have, I think it's six cars, maybe seven, that are used for trip cars, for people to take, go to a meeting in Duluth, to go to meetings in the cities, wherever, all of the state that we have. And a lot of times, people will opt to take their own vehicle instead of one of these vehicles, partly because these vehicles are older and people are not comfortable necessarily driving them. We've had, we've had incidents where car has broken down when somebody was in a different part of the state. These are, many times, these vehicles are old sedans, and in the winter months, people prefer to drive something with all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive. And the end, end result is, we don't have a policy about this, so when people choose to drive their own vehicle, they get reimbursed for the miles. When, when they choose to drive a county vehicle, the money stays in the county and helps fund, helps fund the whole vehicle maintenance fund. So, you know, it would, it's, maybe there's an opportunity if we improve our fleet and standardize to more all-wheel drive vehicles, that, that we can have people, we could, we could have a policy that, that, that people would use county vehicles rather than their personal vehicle, if there's one available. And maybe we base reimbursement on that. So I'm, I want to explore that a little more, see what other counties are doing. Either way, it's still a, it's still an opportunity for us, and I think if we, if we made it more of a policy for people to use these vehicles, we could save even a lot more money. I think the number Brady had, we spend $32,000 a year on reimbursing individuals for mileage. So with that, I'm going to just see if Brady has any further comments, and I would entertain any questions that we have.
Mr. Chair, yeah, those numbers are accurate. We pay the same mileage, you know, the federal rate, to people that take their cars, it's the same rate that we charge ourselves internally for using county cars. Yeah, I mean, the value in this is, is getting newer vehicles because of the technology changes, the fuel use, the maintenance, they have the ability because of their size to take the used vehicles and quickly put them into shape and resell them at a better value than we can because of their economies of scale, the size of the organization, and probably the same for their present availability. So it goes forward, it's likely that, that it would save money over, over the long term.
Okay. So this is a discussion information agenda item, so it's going to be ongoing, but I think we want the Commissioners to sort of weigh in on this and express their thoughts and concerns as we bring it forward, so we'll start with that. Commissioner Mills, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rena and Brady, for getting this put together. I, I, I think that these fleet services can be a good deal for, for the county, and that we can save money and, and will make, make things safer as well. I do have concerns about mandating use of county vehicles, but I am, I'm very open to revisiting that policy and seeing the impacts it could have. And I, I guess I'm having a hard time with the spreadsheet because it's so large, I think, and spread out. So as this conversation continues, it would be, if possible, nice to have it in a more concise format and maybe have things broken out a little bit more, or rather summarize more or something. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure where I'm having problems, but I guess just might, might be good for a committee of the whole discussion. Over.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Mills in terms of, well, mandating, but let's say we encourage people to move forward with using county cars whenever possible. Like in my situation, it would be 80 miles for me to drive to Grand Marais, to get a county car, to go on my trip, come back, you know what I mean? So, but I'm willing, you know, definitely to look at that when the Budget Committee starts and when the Board assesses this further, and in looking at the six cars, I think right now that I recommended for review for replacing, all of that is in my bucket list, and we'll proceed with looking into this as the time comes for us to look at all of the budgets. Over.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Deschaux?
Yeah, I think we could save money in area, in that area there, but mandate a Commissioner to take their car, you know, some, I guess it depends which meeting you were going to and if it was an overnight meeting or whatnot, because personally, myself, I don't feel comfortable taking a vehicle to Minneapolis to a meeting, staying overnight, and then using the vehicle on my personal time down there to go visit friends, to restaurants, et cetera. So I think it, different situations would work and others wouldn't, so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DuPerrit?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Mills in having a committee of the whole discussion on this. I'm looking at it a little more. I think it's a good thing to pull this up and take a look at it, and the reason why we have vehicles that are so old is because we don't trade them out until they hit 100,000 miles, and when they have minimal usage, they take longer to get there. As you can see, many of our vehicles still have low mileage even though they're old, and part of why they have low mileage is because they're not all-wheel drive and they don't have the safety features. I know there's been times when we've been lined up to use a vehicle and it's been a blizzard, and so then Dave has had to go find us a four-wheel drive vehicle because there's just no way we could drive the sedan to where we needed to go. And, yeah, a policy, obviously, we can look at other counties and see it's difficult for us because we are at the end of the state, and it's really hard to get to a lot of our stuff without taking a county vehicle, so I guess we'd look at some of the rural areas to do that. And I've also been in office long enough to see in the past, none of you currently, in the past, there were Commissioners that used their own vehicles solely for the purpose of supplementing their income, and I don't know if that's a continued practice or there's a concern for that, but that is one other issue to look at when we're looking at different vehicles. So I look forward to talking about this at a committee of the whole. Over.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I guess I agree with the issues that have been raised. This, to me, is an issue where you've got to look at it as a student implication as the largest priority in going forward. Before, there's a lot of other things that would support this, so I would, I would be in favor of really getting serious about this. The sooner, sooner we do it, the better. You can look at the options of the six or going the entire fleet, but I, I think it's a good budget decision, but then it's got so many, many other areas of better, better use, better safety. It's just sort of a win-win-win. I can't see a disadvantage except maybe some people, which I don't agree with, think that we shouldn't have good cars for the county, and I don't agree with that at all. Okay. Administrator, administrative updates. Excuse me, interim administrator Rogers, do you have any more for us this morning?
I do, thank you. And I will look for an opportunity at a future committee of the whole for us to have perhaps a presentation from the Enterprise people where you can... a presentation from the Enterprise people where you can ask them specific questions about their model. This is, we've had them run it like three different ways already with different inputs into it. So I apologize for the small, for the small and hard-to-read Excel spreadsheet. So the only real other update that I have, well, I have two, I guess. I think, you know, things are going actually pretty well with the state of emergency plans and things we've put in place at the county. The recycle center, as you know, is open three days, and we're monitoring that. Tim and his staff are monitoring it. Now that things have evened out and the traffic flow is more even there about, you know, we'll continue to look at the possibility of opening additional days. The courthouse being closed has worked out pretty well. Most people are working at home comfortably and productively right now. We've got the ability for people to leave packages in mail at a drop box, in front of the secure drop box in front of the courthouse. We have enough online services, and people are being responsive, calling folks back with questions. So even when the governor lets things up next week, we know that he will still be, we're hearing that he will still be encouraging people who can work from home to work from home, and so we'll be looking at that. And for our other workers, like the Highway Department workers who are out in the field working, they have also been implementing social distancing, you know, not taking four people in a truck, maybe taking four trucks for four people instead, which may seem excessive, but we want to keep them safe as well. And you might see other things like persons sitting in a loader during the day rather than truck drivers loading their own gravel. You might see one person sitting in that loader so we don't have to sanitize it between uses. So there are things that may look funny when you see them, but they're actual things that we're putting in place to try to maintain the social distancing and the safety of our workers. On that note, depending on what the governor has to say to us later this week, where I'm in conversation with St. Germain's Glass about getting installers back up here to continue work on courthouse windows. So if the governor lifts some restrictions on the stay-at-home and people who are working on those kinds of construction projects are free to travel, then we'll probably have them back here next week. The courthouse in the areas where they would be working is largely empty or it would be very easy to move people. So it's actually a good time. And we would ask them, and I have asked them already, that they would need to comply with other safety issues that we have here in the courthouse, such as wearing a mask inside and social distancing with each other. So we're looking at that. That's kind of fluid right now, but I would anticipate we'll see them back next week. So those are my updates for right now.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move into employee concerns, commissioner concerns. We'll just go on a roll call of any comments commissioners would like to make, and I guess you could also address something to our Interim Administrator with her update as well and maybe this part of the meeting. So I'll start off with Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, and thanks, Rena, for updating and making us aware of odd-looking scenes that we don't be, shouldn't be too concerned about it because of the safety of the employees. I don't have a report, so I'll wait for a meeting update. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And the only thing, I guess, the only thing to add after a report is just attending the hospital board meeting. It was, you know, great to hear how integrated we are as a community with the hospital, the clinic, county public health, and emergency management and law enforcement and the media. It's just good that we're rolling this together. And certainly, the COVID-19 has had an impact on the hospital's budget, and they're watching that very closely. It's fairly alarming, and, you know, this is all happening knowing that if we do have a wind, we do have a case or a peak in Minnesota. It's more like July and possibly Cook County in August. And so that's a ways away, and so this is a long, hard road, but, you know, it's very important that we're all staying very diligent and doing what we can to minimize our risk. The other thing I had to report on is I've been sitting in on and participating in this economic reopening group, and there's kind of some guidelines that are being developed working with public health about procedures that businesses can use to be as safe as possible when restrictions are lifted. And they've been getting feedback from businesses on that, too. And I'm just impressed with the tone of the group and the willingness and the understanding that this has a huge impact, not just on the economy, but on the health of our community. And so I'm sure that'll be getting revised and being put out there. But otherwise, I don't have any questions, and I think that's it. Over.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner DuKer?
No questions or comments. Again, just thank you to everyone for all the hard work during this strange times. Over.
And Commissioner Deshaun?
No comments.
Okay. And then if anyone wants to comment on meeting updates, I think we have one update from Commissioner Mills. Any others? Just go ahead and state your name.
Mr. Chair, this is Attorney Higgins.
Go ahead.
I'm going to request that the board take action to set the special meeting next week with the amended purpose to include those two items that we discussed. I don't recall, well, unless it happened when I was at the court proceeding, I don't recall there being action to set that special meeting with a different purpose. You certainly already said it, but you said it with the purpose of COVID-19 response. And we need to add the engineer temporary replacement.
Right. You have the other one?
Was there another that was discussed? Oh, I guess it was the...
No, no, excuse me, it was, excuse me, I don't recall. We did talk about that.
Yeah, I think we talked about the reroute and the potential of putting that on the agenda, but I don't think that's the board's desire, right?
We did take action. What was the other one?
To add the temporary replacement for the highway engineer onto the purpose for the special meeting next week.
Except the only one.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Mills. I'll make a motion to add the hire of the temporary department head at the special board meeting next Tuesday. Over.
Okay. Do we have the board a second?
Second, Commissioner DuKer. Over.
Okay. Do a roll call vote on that. Is there any further discussions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Deshaun?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKer?
Aye. Over.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye. Over.
And for Sean, aye. Over. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners or any other staff that was with us today?
Do you remember time?
Yes.
I have a meeting just for all of us to know. Yesterday, I attended a two-hour AMC Health and Human Services Policy Commission webinar put together by Emily Bappap. And I won't go through all of those things. I'll bring them up when we have our public health meeting. But she did say that we will have district meetings. They will be virtual, as far as she knows right now. And since we're District One, ours is scheduled to be the end of May. So we will have meetings, and it'll just depend on what the scene looks like, but I'm pretty sure they're all going to be virtual. Over.
Thank you. Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Commissioner Mills.
Okay. All right. We'll just do a quick roll call vote on adjourned meeting. Commissioner Deshaun?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye. Over.
Ms. Starley?
Aye. Over.
And for Sean, aye. Over. Very good. Thank you for a very productive meeting, good discussion, and I've heard a comment, I'm sorry, but I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you, and have a good day, everyone.